Today's episode is brought to you by Dr. Jeffrey Halsted, DMD. Dr. Jeffrey Halsted has been Canadago's hometown dentist for more than 35 years, offering routine dental care as well as cosmetic dentistry, implants, and dentures by their highly trained and experienced staff. Visit them online at CanadagoDentistry.com or find them on Facebook and Instagram. Today, we continue our series previewing local elections across the region by catching up with one of the candidates running for Geneva City Council in Ward Two. Cassie Snyder joins me in studio. Cassie, thanks for being here.
Thanks for having me.
Um, easy question right off the top. Why are you running?
Um, well, I'm running because I had a pretty terrible interaction with the incumbent, and that was a couple years ago. I watched a lot of the city council meetings and did not understand why it was so contentious and explosive and was like, something's got to change. And I was kind of vocal about it to a couple people. And then when there was nobody else to run for Ward Two, they asked me, and I was like, okay, so here I am. But I mean, it's kind of interesting because government is for everyone, and if I can do it, other people can too. So like, if you've got complaints, put your money where your mouth is, but be willing to like, learn as much as you possibly can.
Definitely. What are you hearing as you go around your ward? What are you hearing from voters as kind of like, the biggest issues they're concerned about?
Um, the biggest things, civility is number one. That came up over and over and over again. And with, I mean, if anyone's watching this, they know, they know. So
We all know.
Yeah, we all know. So that is, that's a big deal. I was kind of shocked to, like, I've been, you know, learning a lot of stuff. We do kind of, we've been doing like, meetings a couple times a month to just kind of like, learn about stuff and get to know things and talk about opinions and fact finding stuff. So I was shocked to learn about the comprehensive plan because it's, it's right there. And it takes the personality and the, the like, the anger out of stuff. You don't have to be emotional about it. It's just, here's the guidebook. You do it by the guidebook, and that's it. So it's weird to me that that hasn't been followed more stringently, especially as things have gotten worse and worse and worse as time goes on. So civility is number one. Lack of things to do for kids is another thing. Aside from the programming at the library, there's really not a whole lot. Like, Bid has gotten a lot better about putting on events and stuff. But I've got two, two children, and I would like them to grow up in a place where they're feel supported and entertained, and there's stuff to do, and they don't want to immediately move away to the, like, a big city 3,000 miles away. So that was a big thing that, that came, came up a lot. Ward Two has changed a lot, it seems, in the last couple years. There's a lot of new people and a lot of young families, and they seem to, you know, all want, similarly what I want is, you know, just more, more things happening and more accessibility and communication. So like, being able to discover things faster and like, just kind of have, have events and city happenings on your radar.
When you think about, a lot of people are going to hear the first part of that answer and think, that's economic development. The city needs more stuff, more stuff for residents, more things for residents to do, more things for kids to do, more rec programming. That probably means more coming into the city. So question is, when you think about what successful economic development looks like in the city, from your viewpoint, what is that? What do you think are the, some of the things that the city really could benefit more from?
Um, I think we could benefit a lot more from better, like, a better website that things are updated and explained more plainly for regular people that are looking for an answer. Usually, there'll be like, a link to some kind of PDF that is confusing and very murky. When I was starting up a business and I was looking to do it in Geneva, I was looking for grants and opportunities, and it was really difficult to find that information. I ended up opening the store that I have in Syracuse because the opportunity happened. But I'm trying to move it to Geneva via a grant. And getting the information for that was a little bit difficult. So it'd be great to get that kind of stuff in people's hands more easily. And just, there's so many different levels of organization. There's like, the Chamber of Commerce, there's Bid, there's also the city, there's all these, the economic development stuff. So to be able to parse out what those are as a regular person is kind of difficult. So it should be more plainly explained, so that there's a, an easier avenue for people to do what they, what they'd like to do in the city. It's, it's a great place, and it's just ready for cool stuff to happen. But we have to help that happen.
Civility was the other thing you mentioned. Not knowing what city council will look like on January 2nd or 3rd or 4th, how do you approach that? And what do you tell people who are maybe concerned about the fact that it could be a, a mixed city council that doesn't all agree on the same things? How would you contribute to trying to be a civil comm force for city council in general?
Well, I think I'm pretty even keeled. I have two small kids that they're, I didn't give birth to them. They were gifted to me. And they've, they've been through a lot. So there's a lot of patience involved with parenting them. So if I could take on a special needs kid that's having like, the world's biggest tantrum, I could probably handle sitting through a, a grown man tantrum happening in front of me. I think another part that, another thing that's pretty important is like, strong mayoral leadership and like, stopping the contention as it's happening, or before it has a chance to happen. So just like, keeping the order of things and keeping, just, just keeping, you know, things strictly to what, what the matter at hand is versus going on a, a weird national politics kind of tangent that, there's no place for that there. So.
So let's talk about some of the issues that Geneva and even surrounding communities are dealing with. First, we'll start with environmental issues, whether we're talking about habs, landfills, drinking water sources, invasive species, economic development. You can't have any of those conversations really without talking about Seneca Lake and the environment at large. What role would you like to see city council play in these environmental issues? And what ones do you think are the most important to be tackling as a city over the next several years?
Um, I think the biggest issue is flooding. I've kind of taken that on just as a person, as kind of a pet project. My basement floods. And that is due to the storm drains on our street being clogged, which they've been clogged for years at this point. And you can see, you can see bricks down there. You could see all sorts of garbage. You see like, leaves, whole branches. It's all there. So I've made a couple of complaints. It's just been what it, what it's been. And when I went to the, the June council meeting, there were some families that talked about their homes flooding on Oak Street. And I was like, it's, it's happening to other people. And their flooding is happening because of Castle Creek. And then there's other flooding that's happening because of Cemetery Creek and a lot of the crumbling infrastructure surrounding that. So I learned about all these things. And in the, the, I don't remember if it was the July or August council meeting, a lady named Judy Salati talked about her experience with flooding and that we need to do something about it. And it was exactly what I'd been talking about with my husband. And I was like, that's what we've been saying. So I just cold called her and was like, hey, you don't know me, but what do you think about trying to like, come up with a plan so that we have an outline and we could bring it to the city and they could maybe take this more seriously? Or there could be better communication about what's going on? Because there's a lot of components and a lot of moving parts when it comes to that stuff. Because it's only going to get worse with climate change, and we want to be prepared for it. So like, the first time flooding happened for me personally, I went to Lowe's to try and find a sump pump, and there were grown men fighting over the sump pumps. Thankfully, my, my boss had one to loan me, but I would have been really up a creek, like literally, if I did not have someone like, kind to loan me a sump pump. So not everyone has that. And so to, to have like, clearly defined resources for the community to be able to combat that, for the city to be taking care of the issues that they can take care of, like, you know, sucking the bricks out of the storm drains on my street or the surrounding streets, or like, figuring out ways of mitigating what's going into Castle Creek. There's, so I talked to Judy about that. And then I called Jan Regan, and I was like, hey, Jan, what do you think about meeting and trying to get some like, homeowners together that have been affected by flooding and maybe business folks and maybe some like, flooding experts? And she was like, that's an awesome idea. Let's do it. So we called Jim Kennedy, who's running for county supervisor. He was on board. And so I just started calling people, and Jan called a bunch of people. And then we just kind of got together a group of some folks whose homes had flooded. Jacob Fox, who's like, a, just an environmental pro, he knows a ton of stuff about the watershed system and the creek systems. And he was able to explain a lot of things to us that made it a lot more clear why things are happening and where. So I kind of mapped out which streets are flooding, how come, did like, a whole map thing, and with the goal of presenting that to the city. One of the other things I'd like to do is make sure that like, first responders have what they need. Because if that's not being taken into consideration in this year's budget, then we might be like, in a gnarly situation in, you know, flooding in April when the snow starts to melt. So that concerns me. That, you know, first responders might be going into like, a flooded area that's contaminated and not have PPE. That's, that's very concerning to me. So I, Jan and I have been trying to work to like, get another meeting going with Chief of Police and Fire Chief to try and see what they have before then bringing it to the city manager and DPW and kind of formulating a plan. So I've been working on that, which I'm going to do regardless of getting elected. This was just kind of reaching a breaking point of having to bail water out of my basement. So.
When a citywide issue comes home.
Yes, exactly.
What sense do you get as far as like, the cost or magnitude of correcting some of these issues? Because it sounds like, I hear some people say that while the infrastructure's bad, the infrastructure needs to be overhauled. And then you're talking about a years-long process. But at the same time, I'm hearing some people say, like, maybe just some stormwater drains need to be cleaned out on a regular basis, or like, a schedule of some kind. Is it like, somewhere in between? Or like, what, what's your sense of this, having been really involved with this now for, you know, a good chain of months?
It, it feels like there's a lot of things that have just kind of been left alone for a long time. And these are basic things that should be on a regular maintenance schedule. There's a lot of things that could be done that are free and easy to, 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 I mean, for, for the drain clogging thing, the putting brush out at the curb thing that the city does is contributing to that because everything just gets washed into the gutter down the street. And then you've got branches and, and stuff and leaves. So like, not having that happen, or having that happen more swiftly, or having folks that do mulching or farms or whatever, take, take those materials on a, so before the rain has a chance to get to it would be huge. So there's, there's a lot of small things that lead to bigger problems. And I think being in a place where we can recognize what the small issues are to fix those now, and then we'll be in a better position later on, maybe where we're not having those things happen. So.
Makes sense. You mentioned fire, you mentioned first responders, so we'll go there next. Fire and EMS. It's expensive to maintain paid services. Volunteerism is also declining on that front. We're hearing all across the region about EMS services that are really struggling to maintain themselves. When it comes to coverage in the city, where do you feel like coverage in the city sits right now? Is it adequate? And then looking ahead, kind of what do you think are some of the bigger opportunities or necessities that the city think about when it comes to maintaining those services for residents?
Um, well, I think that, what exactly is the question?
When it comes to maintaining the services, the first responder services, fire mainly, that the city provides now, what are some of the things that you think city council needs to keep in mind, knowing that paying is expensive, probably going to result in higher taxes over time, and relying on volunteers also isn't a very reliable method? How do you think city council should approach that, given that there's kind of a delicate balance to be, a fine line to be walked?
Well, I think that reevaluating the shared services is huge. The more I've done a lot of looking into the issues of the city and taxation and where it's at, it's really confusing to me how much money is going to other municipalities via our services. So there are, you know, the surrounding cities are on our water supply and sewage, and then they're also using our fire services and, you know, police and EMS. And that's a big deal. That's very expensive. So it feels kind of like having Wi-Fi, and then all your neighbors are just at your door stealing it, and your Wi-Fi is going really slow. It feels like that, but our, our, our neighbors are, you know, Waterloo. And the other surrounding cities, no shade to Waterloo, but like, they should be, these places should be paying their fair share. So I think that having that looked at more closely is a big deal. I think that also, one thing that's kind of overlooked is, there are a lot of kids that maybe don't have direction, don't know what they want to do after school. So I think that having more opportunities to learn what EMS is, and to maybe shadow, you know, like, police or EMS or fire would be a pretty cool thing, and might get some kids interested in doing that post-high school, and get them on track to, you know, having that as a career. So I think that that would help provide a lot of direction. And it's, it's just really about communication with, between our, our schools and our, our programs at like, FLCC and stuff like that.
You mentioned Waterloo. I've done a bunch of these interviews, and the town of Geneva always comes up. Obviously, a lot of growth, a lot of development happening in the town of Geneva, largely at the benefit of some of those services that you were describing that the city provides. Is that perhaps where a better relationship and a more equal balance needs to be maintained between the town and the city?
Oh, definitely. It's, it was, I moved here in June 2020, and I didn't know about the difference between the town and the city. And as I learned more about that, it was very confusing that you can drive like, three blocks from me, and then your tax rate is entirely different. So, or you can own a horse, or chickens, or something like that. So, which was difficult to explain to like, a 12-year-old. Like, you, sorry, you can't have a horse, but if we lived over there, you could. So I, I think that as far as shared services go, it would be really smart to be, again, reevaluating our, what, how badly we're hemorrhaging money to the town and the surrounding areas, and making those taxpayers pay their fair share for these services. Because it's, the burden is getting really heavy for the people of the city of Geneva, and people are going to start leaving. And we, we don't need that.
Is, one of the criticisms we've heard pretty regularly is that the city's tax rate is just too high compared to other cities that are either equal to size or larger. Is, can, do you feel like that can be worked on just by working better with the surrounding municipalities?
Oh yeah, I think that's huge. I think that another thing is, we, whenever, like, with the budget thing, it's, it happens yearly, but it doesn't feel like there's a lot of maintenance. Like, if there was more communication about like, maybe monthly kind of a check-in about stuff like that, or maybe like, seeing where we're at with the, a reevaluation process, that would be a huge help. Because otherwise, it feels like, you know, the, the scramble of when I do my taxes at the end of the year, and I'm stressed out trying to find receipts. It feels like that, but for the month of October. So I think that that, that is a big, big deal. What else were we talking about?
Just the, the general relationship between the, the town and the city.
Oh, yeah.
In terms of getting frankly, what the city deserves out of the town for what it is providing. I mean, the town is going through a major growth phase that really the city should be experiencing. And the only reason the town is experiencing it is because they can leverage the city's services at a lower tax cost.
Yeah. I, as far as taxes go, I think that also, we should be doing, we should be more proactive when it comes to finding different tax sources that aren't just taxing the heck out of our residents. Will Wolfe had brought up an excellent point that I would never have thought of, that if we were to have like, a cannabis dispensary or something like that, that we would be able to get a lot of tax money out of that. And that's not really something that, I mean, I'm, as someone that is, doesn't really care about cannabis at all, like, that's, would have been totally off my radar. But, you know, he's, he's younger and cooler. So like, you know, he had that idea. So I think that bringing different voices to the table is also going to bring different ideas to the table when it comes to helping to resolve this problem in a way that is not just about like, residential tax kind of things. But as far as the, the city and the town goes, yeah, I think that, that's, I mean, that, that seems to be the biggest burden. So I think that we need to get on top of changing that.
Let's talk about housing. Housing is always a hot button issue, whether you're talking about senior housing availability, whether you're talking about rent prices, whether you're talking about just availability of median, middle-of-the-market housing, single-family housing. How would you like to see the city approach these issues as much as they possibly can? What would you like to see the city do over the next several years to help, you know, the city and the county at, at large go in the right direction with housing?
There's a lot that can be done. I went to one of the meetings for the, the county, like, tax, housing survey thing, and learned a lot about, you know, the uniqueness of Geneva when it comes to financial situations and disparity. And I already kind of knew that, but like, seeing it laid out with like, facts and statistics was pretty eye-opening. There are a lot of, there's, there's a lot of talk about zombie houses and that, you know, are not inhabited, that the, the city owns or are like, just sitting there and rotting. Finding appropriate use for those, whether it's like, selling them, rehabbing them, or just like, selling the property and giving people a, maybe like, some kind of deal when it comes to if, if they can rent to folks that are like, low to moderate income. In New York City, there's a lot of buildings that are like, luxury apartments, but you have to have a certain amount of folks that are low to moderate income there. There's a housing lottery. So you sign up for it. Eventually, your, your stuff gets called, and then you can, you know, there's a lot of housing opportunities that open up for you then. So something like that would help a lot. I think that it's, there are a lot of empty houses that the city doesn't own, which I've also learned a lot about while canvassing. Like, neighbors will point out like, that house has been empty for years. That house has also been empty for years, but folks are paying the taxes on it. So it's not going, it's not, the city doesn't own it yet, but it's, it's empty. And it's not helping anyone. So getting code more involved, or giving them the, the strength to be able to, you know, either write up these houses for issues that they're having, or the city somehow putting the squeeze on the folks that own it to like, do something with it, or, or, or else. I think that that's a big deal. There are so many empty houses. It's very, it's very weird, especially for such a desirable area to just have a lot of houses that are empty. And if the, if, and, you know, the city's mowing the grass on it when they're paying the taxes, it's, it's very weird. So there's, there are ways of fixing that. We just need to keep that on our radar and use that as part of like, a longer-form plan for housing.
Too many rental properties? It's one of the things that we hear, I've heard fairly frequently from Geneva and Canadago residents, is that they feel like, there's a perception at least, that cities are becoming kind of overpopulated with rental properties and not as much homeownership. Is that something that you think the city could potentially look at as, you know, maybe at some point here, a cap, or at least a database that gives everybody a real-time look at, you know, what percentage of our people living in the city are renters?
Yes. And the idea that there's not a cap is a little scary, because that gives an opportunity for folks that have big money elsewhere to just swoop in, buy a bunch of houses, and then it's just, you know, nine months out of the year, they're empty. So that doesn't contribute to the, the culture of the community. It, it does not help. So, and it also makes a huge pain for a lot of residents when they're, when the, the owner's off-site, and there's rowdy bachelorette parties happening. They recently made some changes to the ordinances surrounding Airbnb stuff, short-term rentals. So it remains to be seen like, how, how, how it's going to be, how it's going to play out. But they're, they're working on it. And, but I, I do worry that the, the culture of the city suffers when there is no opportunity for folks that are like, working class to buy houses and to like, settle permanently without the fear of their rent going up astronomically and having to move somewhere else.
Last question related to an aging population, which the whole region is dealing with right now. Last month, we saw a report that forecasted 40% increase in the 65-plus population by 2040, and all other age groups, the younger age groups, declining by 7 to 14%. With a college, with the colleges right in the city, do you think Geneva might be a little insulated from that problem? Or do you think there's work to be done to get young people, young families, planning, starting families and planting roots here?
As of now, we're not insulated against that problem at all. Like, the, there are a couple different things that I'd like to talk about with that. So with the baby boomer generation aging to where they're the baby boomer generation aging to where they're going to start wanting to live in places where they don't have to cut the lawn or um, you know, do, do outdoor maintenance or have to climb stairs, there's not a lot of options for, for them. Um, we're kind of exporting our seniors to other places like Canadega and where there are options for housing for them. And that's alarming because you live your whole life somewhere and then you have to move somewhere else because you can't find first-floor living. So um, that's, that's a big deal. Um, uh, that will be hopefully like addressed when it comes to um, like making moves with the county housing survey data and making changes there. Um, I thought it was weird when I, I moved here that no babies are born in Geneva. That seems really dystopian and um, scary. Um, so uh, I think it, part of that is, it's, I, I've worked in, in retail in the downtown area and um, seen waves of college kids come in and seen waves of their parents come in and graduation weekend and move-in weekend. And just there's, like, it's the most beautiful place. I love it. And they, I'm sure lots of people would want to start their lives here if it was more hospitable for that. Um, there's a lot of hostility toward um, the college for some people. Uh, and I, a, a lot of that surrounds taxes. Um, I think that if we were to um, ch- change some of that, maybe that might go away. Um, but it's uh, we need to, we need to make the town more a place where someone who is young and just starting out can actually start a life here. Um, and maybe babies will be born in Geneva again. It's, it's very strange to me. Um, so uh, yeah, um, I, I have been heartened by canvassing and meeting so many young families, though. Um, so I, I feel like the potential is there and we're kind of, uh, we're getting to like, it's kind of a new era, um, like post-COVID with so many like new young folks moving in. So um, I'm looking forward to whatever happens.
Optimism. It sounds like there's some optimism there. Um, where can folks learn more about your campaign or throw you a question if they have one?
Um, I only have Instagram, so it's at Cassie J Snyder. Um, I uh, don't do Facebook because it's a viper's nest of negativity. So um, I mostly post like art stuff and uh, stupid videos that I've made. So um, if you're into that, be my friend.
Cassie, appreciate the time. Thanks for coming down.
Thanks, Josh.
That'll do it for this edition of FLX Today. If you'd like to hear more conversations like this one, check out the show on your favorite podcast platform or subscribe to the FingerLakesOne.com YouTube channel. Have a great day and we will see you next time.